Health, Safety and Security Committee, Facilities Committee, and the Special Education Committee. We establish our rates for the budget vote and special election tellers. We establish the polling places in the district. And then Board Policy Rules Regulation Code of Conduct, which got reapproved. And our NISBA Policy Alert, so we're renewing to New York State School Boards Association, sending us guidance on policies that are coming from the state. At this point, I would like to make a motion for adjournment and a short recess.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Why can't I get my damn agenda? All right, are we good?
All right, let's go.
They keep getting off. I don't know what to tell you. I'm ready. Mike, you're good? Left side, left side is good. Left side is good. Right side? Mic mute off.
Let's go, hit the gavel.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 9th, 2025 Eastport South Manor Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, we have minutes of our June 11th, 2025 and June 17th, 2025 meeting. So first, can I please have a motion to accept the minutes from the June 11th, 2025 meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, can I have a motion to accept the minutes from the June 17th, 2025 Special Board of Education meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're going to move a few things around here. So before we get to our reports and announcements from our superintendent in schools, I would like to move up to appointments. First one, I would like to appoint Carrie Von Voit as the Assistant Principal at the Junior-Senior High School. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Yes, unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, I would like to appoint Rebecca Belaza as the Principal for Tuttle Avenue School. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, unanimously. Thank you.
Just want to take a minute to welcome our two new administrators to the district. Carrie Von Voit as our Assistant Principal, she comes to us from the Bayport Blue Point School District, she's worked there for 19 years. She has experience that I think will really fit in and fill the void that we have in our current open assistant principal position. And for her years there, she was a mathematics teacher, so I think it'll be a real nice addition to the building. And I want to, you know, you could see Mrs. Von Voit there is with her family, so I want to thank and welcome all of you to ESM, and you get to be Sharks now, in addition to where else, where you live at home. And then we also have Rebecca Bellezza coming to us from the Kumsawag School District. Mrs. Bellezza has worked as an administrator at the, as an assistant principal at their middle school. She has taught also at elementary schools. I think she's going to be a fantastic fit as a principal for our Tuttle Avenue School. And I want to welcome you and your community resident as well, so you know your way around the neighborhood, which is nice. But I also want to welcome your families to the district because it's an important thing that you're a fit with us, we're a fit with you, but a lot of time in your lives will be spent here, unfortunately, sometimes away from your family. So I do want to thank your significant others and your children that are here, and thank you for sharing your moms with us as being administrators here at ESM. So thank you very much, and welcome aboard, and welcome to ESM.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steimel. At this time, we have our appoint, uh, reports and announcements. Mr. Steimel, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, just that the two student members of our Board of Education are away this week, and they will be joining us at our next meeting. So we have, we have two that will split up their time. We have a space for them, and we're all ready to roll, we have microphones, a seat, and they'll join us at our next meeting.
Yeah, that's going to be exciting. Thank you very much, Mr. Steimel. So at this time, we moved up because of the public participation signup being a little bit more than the usual nobody. We moved it all the way up to here for public comments. I...
I think they did. They took it.
They've generated?
Yeah. Shh, baby's sleeping.
So I'm going to read, I'm going to read through, as chairperson for the meeting, I'm going to read through the protocol for public comment, and we'll do our best to work through this tonight. So, "Board meetings are the only time and place where school, school board acts. While the meeting is conducted in public, input or comments from the public are welcome. There is a public comment portion of the meeting where residents are invited to address the Board of Education. Public participation at Board of Education meetings is limited to district residents. Board members want a productive, positive dialogue with our community to respect everyone's time and will engage all who wish to address the Board. We ask you to. Listen respectfully to the process of the decision-making. Disruptive or disrespectful behavior may lead to an ejection. That's not when you're speaking, that's just during the meeting. Okay? When speaking, please proceed to a microphone, state your name, your address, before asking your question in a concise manner. Each resident who wishes to speak or asks a question is limited to five minutes. Understand that the chair will not allow questions or statements about any specific staff member or child. We will not allow the use of individual names when speaking in public. This is a mandated protection of individuals. If there are multiple residents speaking on the same topic, please select one spokesperson to address the board. We cannot allow multiple guests to speak on the same topic." I spoke to everyone before the meeting regarding that, and obviously, we see what the topics are, and the board is willing to make a concession to try our best to let everyone speak. Obviously, the five-minute rule will be in place, and we will do our best at one minute to let you know. There's a counter there, I think there's one behind me, and our district clerk will put that up. Forward questions or comments to the district clerk email address, which is rreyes@esmonline.org if you have any further questions. If you do not wish to speak publicly, you can do the same. So if you're in the audience, or if you're listening out there on YouTube, you can send anything to our district clerk's email. Please remember to include name and address so we can respond to your question. Okay. So the first person signed up here is Peter McGuire. If you could come up, take a seat, Mr. McGuire, turn on the microphone, and we will start our five-minute timer on you. And thank you very much for coming.
Hello? Hello, my name is Peter McGuire. I have a daughter that attends ESM High School and is a student athlete participating in several varsity sports. I extend my sincere gratitude to the board and the superintendents for their courageous decision to remove the lacrosse coaching staff after years of mistreatment and bullying of student athletes. Concerns throughout the years have ranged from mocking student athletes with IEPs that need extra time on tests, disgusting, to berating players and threatening to contact college coaches to prevent recruitment, unbelievable, to excluding a player from a team bonding event and posting pictures on the team Instagram of everyone but that player, to insinuating players are faking injuries and purposely ignoring players even when spoken to, the list goes on. The behavior of these coaches is unacceptable. Coaches are educators and should be held to the same standards as teachers. They are mentors and role models. Many parents will stay quiet out of fear of repercussions and retaliation against their child and possibly make a bad situation even worse, or the ridiculous misconception that such behavior constitutes tough coaching. It is difficult to comprehend how any parent could support coaches with this type of conduct towards our children, but as you will see tonight, some will do it for personal gain. We will never tolerate a teacher speaking to and/or treating our children in this matter, then why would we allow coaches, who are also educators in this district, to engage in such behavior? With this beha, with this behavior, it's astonishing these coaches still retain their teaching positions. Tonight, you may hear students and/or parents with nice experiences, and that's great for them. I'm happy they didn't have to endure the bullying that so many young girls had to, had to, but without a doubt, they witnessed these actions. I am here tonight for the many student athletes that were victims of bullying, who up until this point had to just deal with it. Furthermore, it's a little surprising to me that coaches who has, who has threatened administrators and players on numerous occasions about quitting are now rallying, rallying players, parents, and lacrosse clubs for support to retain their coaching positions. Although I am one standing here, sitting here, I know I am not alone. This is evident by the emails, phone calls, and texts of gratitude when word got around that this coach was finally removed after years of complaints. Finally, there has been a narrative pushed by a coach that the coach's removal has come solely because of my daughter. My daughter is one victim in a long line of victims over many years, which has led to this decision. I will unequivocally protect my daughter against bullying until the end. I will never quit, and I will never stop. Again, thank you for your unwavering support.
Thank you for sharing. Okay. We're going to reset the clock. Our next person is Ronald Masara. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, welcome, new board members. God bless you. It's not an easy job, I know. And thank you to Mrs. Steimel, Mr. Goldhammer, Ms. Deener. You know, I appreciate the work you guys do on a daily basis, and always keeping the interests of children in the forefront of every decision you make. So I certainly want to extend my appreciation for the work you do because it is a thankless job. And I do understand that. My name is Ron Masara. I live at 78 Drew Drive, I've been a resident here for almost 28 years. Had four daughters that have come through the Eastport South Manor Schools, three have graduated, one is in, going into 11th grade, so that makes me a girl dad. And I'm a very proud girl dad, I have to say. Tonight, I'm going to tell a little bit of a different tale because I'm here to talk about essentially the extraordinary accomplishments, I'm not going to call out people, but I will call out the extraordinary leadership and accomplishments of the coaches who've guided the girls' lacrosse program over the past 15 years. In those 15 years, this program has grown into one of the most successful and respected high school teams, not just in the region, not just in the state, but in the nation. In that time, the girls' lacrosse team and female athletes associated with have earned unparalleled success. And I had to write this all out because it's too many things to remember, and I wanted to get the facts straight. In terms of individual student accolades, there were 13 U.S. Lacrosse All-Americans in the past 15 years, six two-time All-Americans, 14 U.S. Lacrosse All-Academic Americans, a Tri-State Player of the Year, four Newsday Long Island Players of the Year, one student played on the U.S. Puerto Rican National Team, and four ESM graduates have gone up to represent the United States of America on Team USA, Team USA's national lacrosse team. And we've also had one to our town finalists, which is the highest individual honor that it's the Heisman of lacrosse, if you're unfamiliar. In terms of program success, the program has seen seven county championships in Suffolk in the 15 years. Two New York State Championships, U.S. Lacrosse in 2019-20 ranked Eastport South Manor, a public high school, as the number-two lacrosse school in the country behind a private school in Maryland McDonough. There are six Suffolk County semifinalists and one county finalist, so if you count that up, really didn't make it to the county finals only a couple of years in the 15. In terms of coaching accolades, our coaches have gotten two times Suffolk County Coach of the Year, Tri-State Coach of the Year, Newsday Coach of the Year, USA Lacrosse Hall of Famer, Saichem Schools Hall of Famer. 92 student athletes in the past 15 years have gone on to play college lacrosse. That's unprecedented in 15 seasons, averaging over six a year. Division One 68 athletes, Division Two 20 athletes, Division Three 5. Schools like Adelphi, Arizona State, Binghamton, and I could list them all, but safe to say when you talk about Clemson, Princeton, James Madison, Johns Hopkins, Maryland, Loyola, some of the finest institutions of higher learning in the entire country. Our students have gotten this because of the experience they've had here. I know that there are people that would say that, no, no, it's their travel lacrosse teams that, that lead to their success, but I am here to tell a quite different story. Six players have gone on to coach at the college level, including Notre Dame, Coastal Carolina, East Carolina, Wingate, St. Francis, Cortland. And so, on and on, kids giving back because of their experiences here. I would say that even more impactful necessarily than the wins of this program essentially are the unwavering personal commitment of the coaches for every student athlete that has worn the ESM jersey.
Mr. Masara, there's one minute left.
Okay. I could personally attest to this. In the third week of June, my daughter, who had been accepted to West Point, the United States Military Academy, decided that she did not want to attend. In the third week of June, admissions are closed at Binghamton University, and most universities are round, rosters are set, and through an unwavering support, our coaching staff went through, made phone calls, and got my daughter enrolled in Binghamton and on the lacrosse team before July 4th of that year. That's incredible, in two weeks, to be able to turn it around and advocate for a child like that. Furthermore... Furthermore, in a conversation with Cindy Timcharl, who is the winningest coach in women's lacrosse, she is at the U.S. Naval Academy, she directly told me that the reason they were, one of the big reasons they were recruiting my daughter was because of the coach that she had. And she understood that that coach was somebody who, excuse me, who not only develops athletes but empowers young women to succeed through a program characterized by character commitment and excellence. This program has brought national prominence to the Eastport-South Manor community and I urge the Board of Education to consider that the benefits that our students have had over the past 15 years should continue. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Okay. Next to the podium is Kelsey Huff.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Kelsey Huff. I graduated from ESM in 2017 and I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about someone who truly defined, you know, not only my life as an athlete, but my life in general. And that person is someone who's been able to coach so many different sports, soccer and lacrosse under ESM for years and has had a lot of success doing so. So I had the privilege to play under many different coaches throughout my career, from high school to college to Team USA, and I went on to play professionally as well. But no one has brought out the best of me the way that this coach has. I met this coach when I was about 12 years old. At that age, you're not really thinking about life lessons yet, you're just mainly focused on, you know, I need to make this team and that's the only goal. But from the beginning, this coach was more than just a coach. They were someone who pushed me, who challenged me in ways that in the moment felt hard and even frustrating. And there were different times in high school when I wondered why she being so tough, but I never walked away from a practice, a game, any situation where I didn't, where I didn't feel like this coach was doing it because she truly believed in me. They taught me to have grit, how nothing is given in life and how I have to fight for what I want, how I have to believe in myself, not just when it's easy, but when it really mattered. One of the most meaningful moments in my life was in 2015 when we won the New York State Championship for women's lacrosse. And it wasn't just a win, it was years of hard work, belief, and standards that she sent in all of us. She knew exactly how to bring a team together and light something into each and every individual on that team that year. That championship wasn't just about talent, it was all about heart. And it's, and no one instills heart more than this coach specifically. She pushed me out of my comfort zone. I ended up attending the University of Southern California where I was able to achieve my bachelor's as well as my master's degree. And I, without a doubt, would not be able to do it without this individual. I would call her from across the country in a different time zone whenever I was feeling a little bit lost. There's a whole different coaching system once you get to college. So I knew that I could always give them a call and she would always be able to be there to support me and guide me back to who I really was. With her support, I was able to become captain. I was also an All-American and I got to play with Team USA as well as professionally in places like Australia as well as Japan. And still, no matter how far I went, this individual was always one of the first people to reach out to me. And that kind of connection doesn't happen often and it certainly does not fade. Now, outside of sports, I work in sales today, I've worked in medical device, I've worked in pharmaceutical, and now I'm in tech sales. And every single interview I've been through, no matter what the industry, they, I've always been complimented on my grit as a student athlete. That's one of the main things that they really start to look for as a student athlete, knowing you're able to push yourself, you're not afraid of no, and you're not afraid when the going gets a little tough. But that, but she goes beyond work and everything like that. In 2022, my father was diagnosed with stage-four brain cancer. And one of the first persons to text me about the situation was this coach. And she didn't only text me, but she texted every single individual in my family. And no matter what, she stayed connected with us throughout. She always was checking in, making sure we were okay, as well as my father. And unfortunately, my father did pass away in May of 2022 and they did something I'll never forget. So we were gifted, me and my family were gifted a mural. And on this mural, it is myself, I have an older sister, a younger brother, and it was with my mother and my dad in the center. And we opened that gift and safe to say, all of us were in tears that day. To this day, that picture hangs right inside the Huff house and it is something that you can see immediately as soon as you walk into our house. And I know without a doubt, if my father was here today, he'd be sitting front row proudly supporting this individual. So safe to say, this coach is way more than a coach. She's a mentor, she's a leader, and she's one of the most genuine, caring, impactful people I've ever known. They know how to lead, how to believe, how to make you believe, and how to put my head down to work for what I want. They've taught me how to be strong, grounded compassion, and a powerful woman. Everything I've achieved on the field, in school, in my professional career, I carry these lessons with me every single day.
Ms. Huff, it's a one-minute warning.
Thank you. I'm who I am because she, they believed in me, pushed me, and never gave up on me. So to end it off, I just want to thank this individual for everything. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, next on the list is Hope Stewart-Wald. I got it.
Got it.
All right. I'm getting something right.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name's Hope Stewart-Wald. I live at 232 Silas Carter Road in Manorville. I grew up here, been in Manorville my whole life, all 25 years. So I just want to say, I'm here tonight, I graduated in 2018. I'm not here just as an alum or a former athlete of ESM and I'm certainly not here for any personal gain, being that I am quite a few years out of school. I am here as someone who owes everything I've become to the woman that you are trying to remove. So I'll start with a question. What is the mission of RC Athletics at ESM? Is it comfort, or is it trophies, or is it keeping parents happy? Or is it to build strong, resilient young adults prepared to succeed in sport, in school, and in life? Because if it's excellence that you're after, then what's happening to this coach isn't just wrong, it's a betrayal of that mission. She built ESM girls' lacrosse from the ground up. And as Mr. Masara said, with all of his amazing statistics, she has had two state titles, seven Suffolk County state championships, countless All-Americans, and herself a place in the USA Lacrosse Hall of Fame. But more than that, she has built people. She has sent dozens of girls to college, many on scholarship. That's over hundreds of thousands in tuition saved for families in our community, families just like mine. She didn't just help us win on and off the field, she opened doors for us. Coaches recruit from this school because they trust her, because they know the kind of athletes and people that she produces. If you remove her, those opportunities for young women disappear. Let's be honest, this is not about misconduct, it's about complaints from people with low standards. They're upset because it's not easy to be great, but since when was excellence supposed to be easy? She pushed us because she believed in us, and thank God that she did. I met her at the age of 13. She started pushing me the day that I met her. So I worked, I grew. By 18, I had a college roster spot at a Division One university. By 24, I became the youngest leadership team member at a multimillion-dollar lacrosse company. I say all this not because I'm some kind of genius, but because of the grit, standards, and love for the game that she has instilled in me has proven successful. Now, I coach a team of my own at my company. We treat our company like a team, and yes, that means we hold the bar high because that's what great leaders do. So I ask you to please reflect. What are you trying to teach these young women at ESM? That when things get tough, it's okay to complain a little louder? That when a coach demands excellence, that they're disposable? That's not education and that is certainly not life. If you move forward with this, you're not just removing a coach, you're removing opportunities for hundreds. You're removing pride for the school and you're removing a legacy at this program. I promise you, none of us will ever forget this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing. Okay. Next on the list is Kate Smith.
Good evening, members of the board and the community. My name is Kate Smith and I graduated from ESM in 2023. I'm speaking tonight to finally call out the cruel behavior of one individual who has held an authoritative position at ESM and within Club Lacrosse for years. I was a witness as well as a victim of bullying from a grown adult as a minor. As I began my school sports day, I didn't, days, I didn't know what was coming for me. I truly had no idea that the biggest bully I would ever face would be my high school soccer coach. I had no idea that trying to play a school sport, which I had been told was fun and competitive, would ruin my relationship with my sport as well as break and belittle me. The bullying from this individual was so harsh, I would often leave practice crying, feeling upset. The mistreatment I endured under this one coach pushed me into a spiral of self-doubt, ultimately resulting in me leaving the sport entirely. I felt isolated when the coach purposely did not invite me to team bonding activities. I began playing ESM soccer in seventh grade after playing travel ball for years leading up. I was a young player hoping to continue to play the sport that I loved, hopeful to enjoy my years. There was always a coach that every older player quietly warned the younger girls about, hoping that they would somehow be prepared for the pain that she would soon inflict. At practices, she singled me out, accusing me of cutting corners. She forced me to redo drills alone in front of my teammates who watched in silence due to her intimidation tactics. It was like this every single year under her watch. No matter how hard I tried to do everything right, it was never enough. She used her intimidation tactics as a form of coaching. She used fear as a weakness in her tool belt. At the beginning of my junior season, we were participating in a contact drill when a teammate's leg wrapped around mine, twisting my knee and setting me to the ground crying. The coach was standing right there, looked me up and down, and rolled her eyes and walked away, leaving me on the field crying all by myself. My teammates didn't know what to do, and then after I saw the athletic trainer, who told me I needed to go get checked out. The next morning, I got an MRI and it turned out that I would be unable to play. After knowing that I could not play, I knew I needed to tell my coach. This was the worst part of the whole entire situation. I knew she would be upset. When I told my coach, she pulled me into her office, which was in the middle school girls' locker room, and proceeded to tell me that I was faking my injury. She said that I didn't want to play, I had a bad attitude, and I was an awful soccer player. I walked out of that office with tears streaming down my face, feeling like every bit of effort and love I had ever put into soccer meant nothing. Even while injured, I showed up to every single practice with a smile on my face, desperate to be seen as a good teammate, desperate to feel included, but I was ignored day after day as if I was invisible. The rumors started next, rumors that she had spread herself, telling teammates I was faking my injury. I felt completely alone, surrounded by whispers and side glances that made me question if I even deserved to be there. I was also told by former coaches and gym teachers that she was talking poorly about me and gossiping about me with them. I would fear for any time that I would see her pass in the halls, and the stress of seeing her made my stomach twist and turn. I decided the only solution to this relentless bullying was to go and speak to the acting athletic director at the time. When I told him everything I went through, written down in chronological order, he sat and stared at me. He soon told me that there was nothing that could be done because there was no physical proof. I now know that this is not the truth and he was single-handedly protecting her. I remember walking out of the office, feeling like it didn't matter and that nobody cared about the truth. This coach stole soccer from me. She took something I loved and turned it into something I dreaded. I was forced to quit at the start of my senior year, a year I'd always dreamed of, walking across the field at senior night, celebrating the end of a journey. I'd worked so hard instead. My soccer code, my soccer career ended in a dark space of hurt, leaving me hating a sport that once brought me so much joy. When I quit, it felt like a weight was lifted off of my shoulders, but the emptiness stayed. I was forced away from the team I loved, but at least I no longer had to put myself in front of somebody who made me feel upset every single day. After graduation, I found a way to turn the emotional damage that she had left on me into something meaningful. I began running to drown out the awful things that she had said to me, and I will be running the New York City Marathon in 2025 and the London Marathon in 2026. I am so beyond proud of myself for turning an awful situation into something so meaningful for myself. I'm not speaking out because of feelings of revenge or hatred that I have towards her, instead I'm doing this because I refuse to let an adult's hatred for teenagers affect anybody's life. The fact that anybody could sit here and support someone who has inflicted so much pain on young individuals saddens me. I am glad that you guys had have good experiences with her, but you must consider her skillset.
Ms. Smith, there's a one-minute warning.
She has always favored the strongest players who would play at a D1 school, hence the Team USA players. She used her favoritism day in and day out. I know I'm not alone in being bullied by her and being belittled day in and day out. I also know that many people are not willing to speak out due to their own needs as well as personal gain. The fact is, this coach has bullied and mistreated so many peoples, leading to many complaints against her stemming from beyond my years and present day. ESM allowed this and continuously made excuses and protected her. ESM protected their employees over the kids who attend their school. I'm glad this is finally being talked about and that the behavior is being confronted head-on. What I went through under her leadership is not something I would wish upon anyone. And I hope that ESM does the correct thing and chooses to protect future athletes from monsters within our school system. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, next on the list is Birdie McGuire.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bridie McGuire. I graduated here in 2023. I played soccer and lacrosse and I was one of my captains for both of the sports. I attend Cortland now and I do play lacrosse there while also majoring in English education. I decided to speak this evening not only on my behalf and my personal experiences, but also for my sister and for those that are afraid to speak up in the past and those who are currently afraid to speak up about the bullying and mistreatment that some athletes have experienced by certain coaches. Not only am I a witness of these actions, but I am also a victim. For as far back as I can remember, I have always loved playing sports and I looked forward to one day playing on the varsity teams here at ESM. Unfortunately, it was not the experience that I had hoped for. I know you might be thinking, I didn't get enough playing time, but that is just not the case. I got plenty of playing time for both of the sports. However, between the varsity sports that I had played, I had coaches who used their power to belittle athletes, talking poorly about athletes to the teammates, and even more shockingly, made jokes about athletes' educational struggles. This was done in front of everyone. I will never forget the day that my biggest fear happened. I was at practice and I wasn't fully understanding a soccer drill. I asked my coach if she can explain it to me again because I wanted to make sure that I understood. The response I got in front of everyone was, Bridie, I didn't know you needed extra time with drills too. My heart dropped and I felt the tears building up in my eyes. I felt so little, so embarrassed, and I felt powerless. There was laughter from the coaching staff as my teammates looked at me with a concerned look, knowing that I've always felt insecure about my extra time within my school, within the school. I remembered struggling, holding in my tears, but once I was by myself, the tears felt like it was never going to stop. I had a similar experience at lacrosse, but that was said by another coach. This is a core memory that I will unfortunately never forget. No athlete should ever feel that way based off of something they cannot control and that is very personal to them. High school athletics are supposed to be competitive and fun. You should be able to look back and have a happy and fulfilling memories with your high school athletic career and your best friends. I look back at my 10th grade self and I want to give her a hug. Not only me, but I want to give a hug to all those girls that have been affected as well, and was made to feel so little by coaches that are supposed to be building them up. I know there is so many of you out there, and although you cannot speak tonight, I will speak for you. The silence has ended. Fear is not a coaching or teaching tool, and bullying is something that is never accepted within the classrooms, so why is it being accepted on the field? The best teachers and coaches are those we remember for the rest of our lives. They are the ones who lead with firmness and also compassion, with discipline, but never with cruelty and humiliation. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. I'm going to try not to butcher anyone else's name, so I apologize in advance. Leila Bloxton.
Good evening.
Thank you, members of the board, for listening to me. I'll be the one speaking for the girls' soccer team today, but I ask if it's okay if my teammates come and stand behind me because what I'm going to be saying comes from all of us.
Yes, they can come up.
The pink shirts give it away.
I'm here today to talk about the impact a coach can make on an athlete's life. The soccer coach has shown us the potential we have in becoming collegiate soccer players, and she has also shown us that we can exceed our limits. She pushes us to work at every practice and at every game, not only this, but makes it fun, like going to Scott's Point, playing laser tag, dodgeball, and rock climbing. Having fun off the field creates our soccer family and a greater love for the game. Without coach, we would not have felt the same. And to have this upcoming season without coach, it would dramatically affect us. We've worked hard as a team with her to bond. We've worked hard to get to the level of success that we've had and plan to work harder as a team with her to be even more successful this season. That doesn't just happen by having any coach, it happens by having the right coach, and we have the right coach. Coach challenges to reach our full potential. As soccer, as soccer, as soccer players, because of this, we learn to be resilient. And being able to play for this soccer coach, we know we will be able to play in any high pressure situation without fear or failure. Our team will not be the same without this coach because we want to be successful on the soccer field and with our academics, but also because we want her to be proud of us. This is not a relationship that just happens, it's one that is worked on and fostered between the players and coaches, and we have this. We're asking the board to please reconsider their decision and allow our coach to coach our soccer team. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. So as I said earlier, you guys did a great job putting... So as I said earlier, um, you guys did a great job putting groups together. Um, the next person on the list has the same topic of discussion, and if it's a, if it's somewhat different and you still would like to speak, you're more than welcome to come to the microphone. That would be Carly Geyer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carly Geyer, and I am the parent of two student athletes who have played for the Eastport South Manor Girls Varsity Soccer Team, under the coach who supervised and led the team last season and for many prior seasons. As a family, we've had the rare and meaningful experience of watching two sisters share the field as varsity teammates despite being three years apart. Because one of them entered the program as a seventh grader, we've had the opportunity to watch the team grow and evolve over many years. In fact, we had the unusual experience of seeing our younger daughter play varsity before her older sister joined the team. That older athlete earned her spot later on and didn't see as much playing time, but she fully embraced her role, loved being part of the team, and took pride in contributing however she could. The only reason that I share this is so that the Board of Education and everyone in attendance understands that I'm coming to you from the perspective of a parent who has experienced having athletes with very different paths, but who share the same positive feelings about their experience under the ESM head coach, who has been in place for many years. As someone who has consistently supported the program, I'm compelled to speak tonight because it seems that the voices of families who have positive experiences have not been equally represented or considered in the decision-making process in regards to not bringing back last year's head coach. We deeply respect and acknowledge that concerns from other perspectives, perspectives exist. However, we are very troubled by the way the positive support for this coach has been overshadowed or dismissed. Many of us believe that this coach's impact extends well beyond wins and losses. Her leadership has empowered athletes and fostered mentorship, accountability, and a deep sense of team identity. In our experiences, we believe that this coach pushes our players to be focused, resilient, and accountable. The culture she built in the ESM soccer program is about integrity and showing up, not just when it's easy, but especially when it's hard. She also reinforces the importance of showing up in the classroom. Her athletes understand that being part of the team means meeting expectations both on the field and in their academic lives. The success of this program under her leadership is not accidental. It's the result of years of consistent investment, care, and high standards. The team has not only achieved athletic milestones, including league titles and county championship appearances, but also built a culture that reflects the best of what high school athletics can offer at ESM. We understand that concerns have been raised, but to weigh those without giving equal consideration to the years of steady, impactful leadership this head coach has shown within the soccer program feels incomplete and unfair. The student athletes who have worked hard and grown in her direction deserve to have their voices be heard and their experiences be factored in. Prior to this meeting, I sent an email from our family's perspective to Superintendent Stimele, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Goldhammer, which Mr. Goldhammer kindly forwarded to all the members of the Board of Education. That email included very specific details and anecdotes about the direct impact this coach has had on my daughters, and I, I won't go into those personal stories here, but if any members of the board would like to discuss them further, my husband and I would be more than willing to do so at another time. However, this evening, I want to focus on the broader message. This is about more than a decision about coaching personnel. It's about the values we teach our student athletes: leadership, integrity, fairness, and the importance of listening to diverse perspectives to make thoughtful, educated decisions.
Mrs. Geyer, you have one minute.
Perfect. We respectfully ask that this coach's year of dedicated service, positive impact, and the strong support from her past and current players and their families, many of whom are here tonight, be given equal consideration. These young women have worked hard and deserve to finish their careers with the coach who has guided them. Please consider the full picture and the important message we can send when we recognize all voices that contribute to our community. Thank you for your time and your careful consideration.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, so only two more on the list. One person has left. So Jennifer Schmidt.
Hello.
Good evening.
All right. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jennifer Schmidt. I've lived in this community my entire life. My father was a board member. I have family members that were teachers, administrators, teachers assistants within this school district. I've been a coach, I was an athlete, and I'm a parent to three children, so I understand a lot of the different perspectives. This community and school district is a part of who I am. I'm here today to show you that there is another side to this. I'm also hoping that with some of the information that you receive, that you can look at this again from a different perspective or different lens. Hopefully, you look at our soccer program and understand that this coach is extremely needed and wanted. I have been alongside this coach as a parent with two female athletes for seven years. Not once have I ever observed, heard, or saw this coach do anything that would warrant this. In fact, the coach has done the opposite. She has taught my children to become better athletes, team players, um, better friends, helped with confidence, and how to deal with conflict appropriately. Being a coach is not just about the wins and losses. It's the lessons that these kids learn while they're being coached. This coach has embodied this for this team and for my children. This team is committed to one another. They celebrate together, they cry together. This group was, has built something very special. It has been fostered by this coach. This coach has supported them on and off the field and has helped these girls have success in athletics and in academics and in their personal lives. Not having this coach would dramatically affect and impact these girls. I ask that you please look at lacrosse and the soccer program separately and understand that there is a totally different dynamic for this team. I ask that when you look at these things, you take out any personal relationships or any biases that you may hold, and the weight of my word is held as strongly as the other information that you received. Again, I thank you very much for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you for sharing. We have one more person signed up on the list. If anyone is out there in the crowd and they didn't realize they had to sign up, um, please just raise your hand, and we'll, we'll, we'll re-sign you up there. But if not, um, Victoria Huff.
So, thank you, Board. I'm Victoria Huff. I live at 23 Tunnel Avenue in Eastport. I've been a member of Eastport and the community since 2016, and I think this evening, we've heard a lot of different perspectives, and I want to come from the perspective, I had a lot of stuff written down, but a lot of that's been covered already, so I want to come to the perspective as far as the youth and where this program is going to go. I've been a coach for both the youth basketball and lacrosse since 2017. I have a rising seventh grader and a rising ninth grader. I'm the type of coach who's very nice, okay? I want to push these kids, but at the same time, I want to give everybody the same opportunity, and that's because I'm at this youth level. As we've heard tonight, Long Island is a hotbed for lacrosse, much like Texas is for football. In the youth program, yes, it should be, everybody gets equal playing time, everybody gets the opportunity to learn a skill, everybody should be pushed to their potential in a positive light and a positive way. As we get to junior high, the same thing. Everybody should get the opportunity to try different sports that maybe they didn't have in the youth program, whether it be field hockey or volleyball, and these kids should have that opportunity. And as they get to JV, you have kids that still want to participate and think, you know, I think I have a go at this, and other kids that maybe say, you know, that's not quite for me. And then we get to a varsity level, and with all due respect, Board, when kids are in academics and they are very smart, they have advanced placement classes, okay? When kids get to a varsity sport and they play in a place like Long Island, they should be able to be competitive, okay? It shouldn't be equal play for everybody at that point, okay? There should be a winning environment to represent your school. Mr. Mousara went through as far all the positives that ESM has, its reputation for lacrosse, and this coaching staff has worked so hard to create that. They don't just know the players that are in high school, they know the players that are in the youth program. These coaches participate and travel with youth kids. They coach youth kids, they push them, they have fun with them, they play games with them, okay? Then they get to a varsity level, and now it's time to compete. We have fun, and we have team bonding experiences, but at the same point, for those kids that excel in athletics, this should be their environment. And I think we've also heard the common thread that there's two sides to every story, okay? And I think you've heard one side that's wearing blue today, but you haven't heard the story of all the positives this coach has brought to so many in this room. It's a sea of pink out there. This coaching staff, this person, has brought people to a certain level, okay? I, I have one other thing, probably a little unorthodox, but as I mentioned, I've seen this program grow from about 2015, 16, 14, and to where it is today. And throughout all these different levels, there have been shirts out there, okay? Whether pink, blue, orange, okay? But these shirts, if you look at them, the words that they have on them, okay? It's all positive messages. It's not bullying messages, okay? You have these, these have come through all the different families. Look, we have family right here, determination. They're trying to incorporate a family environment, okay?
Ms. Huff, you have one minute.
Thank you. We have county championships, we have state championships, and then we have shirts that reach out to folks that deal in everyday life, okay? When cancer comes around, they're there to support whatever family is on that team or has gone through that team, and it's not just a Huff family, it's whatever family or whoever they know, okay? This coaching staff has done tremendous for the Eastport School District and has made a great reputation, and for somebody to lose their legacy and their reputation based on some parents, I don't think you've heard the majority, okay? I think it's been a silent majority, and I appreciate all the great speakers that we had today. They made so many wonderful points as far as you had, you've heard one side of the story, but you have, you haven't heard the positive side of these stories. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to just say a few words. I want to thank all the community members for coming for public participation. This board always appreciates when our community members come and, and they speak. The parents, thank you, great job. The alumni and students, impressive as always. You guys are great speakers, and thank you for coming. So we're going to move on to our board committee reports and the appointment of our committee chair persons. Yes, if anyone wants to leave at this point, you can leave. The next part of the board meeting is policy and about 30 pages of board business. I'd like to make a motion to go to a short recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back. All right, let's get moving again, and we'll restart. Okay? Mr. Fabian, Mr. Ferraro? Hit it, let's go. All right, we're adjourning from our recess. All right, so board committee reports, tonight is, oh, sorry about that, now you can all hear me. So board committee reports, tonight we are going to appoint the committee chair persons for the board committees that were aforementioned in our reorg meeting. Now, I think we are just going to keep it as is from this year, we'll roll it over. Everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, so Michelle, if you can, Ms. Reyes, if you please can just keep the chair people the same from 2024 now to 2025 and 2026. Okay. Dr. Christie, Mr. Fabian, sorry, we, we adjourned. Welcome back.
Where'd you go? We were for like 30 seconds.
We adjourned, it was a quick adjournment. Okay, so we just went through our board committee report. I don't think we need to make a motion to keep our committee chair people the same? Okay, so we're good to go. All right, we're going to move over to policy. Mr. Fabian.
Yeah, I was looking for the crowd when I, when I came out. So, you know, as you know, this is a, tonight we have one policy, it's a new policy.
Microphone on so they can hear?
Yeah, yeah, you could hear, right? Yeah, so it's a new policy, it's required, policy 5695. It has to do with a, a new education law, a New York State Education Law 2803, which prohibits the use of all internet-enabled devices. So you've kind of seen this probably in, in newspapers and, and on the news as far as like the cell phone ban is what they seem to be calling it, but it encompasses all internet-enabled devices. So the policy that is provided, it's, it's an NISBA policy, it's, it's been vetted by our attorneys, and it's a policy that, that really just kind of outlines how our district and, and really all districts across New York are going to be enacting this internet-enabled device ban, which is during the school day. So there's a few components of the policy which allow us to have input on how we're going to be handling it, but they, basically, it, it requires that we provide different ways for parents to communicate with their children during the day, which we're going to be doing through, through use of the school district phones, but we've left a couple of things open for, for future opportunities where we may be able to leverage some of our student management systems to communicate back and forth. But basically, what this policy is saying is that we're going to be banning all internet-enabled devices, that's phones, smartwatches, tablets, or anything capable of connecting to the internet from bell to bell, which is from the point students walk into the building to the point that they leave at the end of the day. The policy requires that we provide some specific language about how we'll be promoting storage of devices, which we will be doing through student lockers. Students will be able to use their lockers, that's our, our main plan. However, if, if devices are, are unseen and off, they're, they're unseen and off. However, we're, we're putting in the policy that they should be in the student locker, they should not be on the students at any point during the day. It also has a, a, some language surrounding exemptions, which could be done for certain medical reasons through 504 CSE, and there's an appeals process that will be in there. And there has some language specific to students who may have who may have other devices for other reasons, like a tablet or something that they may use for translation. And there's different caveats that could be built into it that we'll address on a case-by-case through building administration. There is some specific language about how we can enforce this policy and how we will report it and some of the consequences. We're unable, and this is again part of the New York State Education Law, unable to suspend solely for a cellphone violation. However, there are steps that can be put in place should students violate this. So it's going to take, this is a policy that's pretty clear-cut as far as the language of the policy. The practice could be potentially a little bit challenging, and that's something that we are working closely with building administration. So that's really it. We kind of covered everything that has to do with the legal side of it. There's also some language surrounding how we will distribute this to the public, which will be through the website, and also some language about how we will handle this during testing season. So we actually, we consulted with our counsel on this. We're able to, this policy has to be enacted by August 1st as part of education law. We were able to suspend our second reading, and we have a resolution for that as well. So if there's any questions about it, certainly, you know, I can answer them. But it's a pretty standard policy. Again, the practice will be a little bit different in the building, but the policy is pretty clear-cut.
Thank you, Mr. Fabian. I know the Policy Committee, I would like to thank them also, have been working diligently on this policy. It is a brand-new policy for us, and we do know that, you know, we might need to readdress this and bring it back up. Are there any questions from the Board? Tonight, our goal is to approve the policy. Is there any questions? I know we have spoken about this at other meetings, okay? So we're going to move forward and adopt. So here we go. Whereas the Board of Education, the Eastport-South Manor School District, hereby is determined it necessary to adopt Policy Number 5695 entitled, Students and Internet-Enabled Devices. After one reading, so as to ensure such policy has been adopted and is in place accordance with the timeline required by law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends the requirement of Board Policy 2410, which requires two readings prior to the adoption for the purpose of adopting the Board Policy 5695 entitled, Students and Internet-Enabled Devices. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education adopts Policy Number 5695 entitled, Students and Internet-Enabled Devices, effective immediately. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I was opposed, still carry, right?
You can be opposed if you would like to.
Opposed to the Governor's mandate, right? Or am I opposing our policy? What am I opposing exactly?
You're opposing this policy.
You'd be opposing the policy.
You don't have a right to oppose a policy.
All right.
Mr. Ferraro, for the record, are you opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 1 opposed, so the policy is adopted. Thank you very much. Let's move on to consent acknowledgements. We don't have any acknowledgements tonight. New and open items. We don't have any new and open items from the Board. Consent agenda. The Board approves a consent agenda for items L1 through 32, and also item N1, okay? Does the Board like to pull or discuss any of those items prior to moving them forward? Okay, that's a resounding no. All right, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda, items L32 and N1?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move, I'm going to move through the highlights of this. Okay. So we funded the EBLR. District Office Garage and New Build. That is the garage that's all the way in the back of the parking lot, okay? That is at Dayton.
At Dayton.
At Dayton Office, Dayton Grounds District Office. That is a feline residence at this point. Needs to be rebuilt. EES Garage Renovation, that's the Eastport.
The cat's going to go.
The device is in Carol Palmer's house.
They are being adopted, the residents of that building. Okay, moving along, were they paying rent? Never mind. There's a bug in here. A dollar here. Okay, so Eastport Elementary School Garage renovation also. All right, and we have our new electric golf carts. Renewal of our snow plowing, salting, and sanding. Hopefully, we don't have a lot of that this year. Renewal of service and maintenance of our boilers. We have a healthy vending program and beverage pouring rights. Integrated pest management goes along with removal of the feline residents. Renewal of our driver's education, which by the way is actually a very nice thing to have at a high school. And not a requirement, yes. Food service management bid extension. My favorite, the tax anticipation note resolution. Obsolete equipment as listed. A budget transfer for $4,722.21. Treasures report donations. We have two donations. Thank you to our South Manor PTA, and thank you to Sunex International at Title Avenue School. We have a cooperative bidding program renewal for going district purchasing policy for special education services and agreements as listed for those vendors. More special education service contracts. Change order credits. So we have some change order credits here from SIBA Construction Corporation. Credits are good, we like credits. We'll take more credits from our people doing the work at the capital project. Wex Bank Speedway Credit Card. Wow, we really raised the credit limit this time, Mr. Laubie.
How much is?
Wow.
It's what they were last year. Load numbers are good. It's enough of what we need.
Wex Bank Exxon Mobile Credit Card. We have JP Morgan Chase Credit Card, Lowe's Credit Card, Home Depot Credit Card. I think we could barely buy a grill with that credit limit. District cell phones.
Mr. Goldhammer, I don't need anybody buying a grill.
That's right.
Moving along, we have excess teachers here as listed for the Board. District Audit Committee, Omni Partners Contracting Services. Service agreement also with Omni Partners. Service agreement with, who's this, Scope and Pitney Bowes? School meal prices. These are as listed, right? Okay. And this is also, is the school meal prices obviously would be public? Okay.
Yeah, let's say the first lunch.
Yeah, so we have new meal prices, and Mr. Laubie can get into more detail on this, but more importantly, the state passed in its budget this year that the students will have one free meal at breakfast and at lunch. So those are for a second. Those prices are for a second and for staff as listed on there.
Okay.
Give me one second just for clarification. Mr. Stimele, is it one free breakfast and one free lunch?
Correct.
Or is it one or the other?
Nope, it's both.
Both meals free one time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The additional ones they will pay for.
Correct.
And the adult lunch, which includes tax, is the highest on this menu, and it's $6. That's a pretty good.
Can we come back and eat lunch for $6?
If you're an adult. Okay, moving along to N1, which is our personnel agenda. We're going to have to put that up on the screen. There is plenty in here to go around. First, we're going to start off. Oh, look at that.
What's up with this fly? You see this fly? I don't. I'm going to hit it with the gavel.
Okay, resignations four, leave of absence one. That's okay, we're fine. So resignation, it's actually five, I missed one. Leave of absence. Appointments. We appointed our two new administrators already, and now we have appointments for teachers. Permanent substitute teachers. I couldn't even begin to count this list. Keep going. Click again. Okay. Per diem substitute teachers, also a long list. Okay, civil service, we have two. Extracurricular activities coordinators, two. Interscholastics, these are the fall coaches for 2025-26 contingent on the coaching certifications, obviously, as listed. Okay, supplemental pay. As listed. And then one more other, that is for our driver's education lecture instructor. Okay, moving on to student services. The Board of Education accepts and acknowledges the decisions already made by the committees on special education. There are two files attached from July 9th, for July 9th. ESM Pride.
Go for it, sir.
Go for it, Mr. Stimele.
I just want to say that, you know, since the last time that we met, there have been quite a few ceremonies at the buildings, from the moving up ceremonies to flag days and most particularly the graduation ceremony at the junior-senior high school. Our administrative team, custodial staff, and grounds crews have done a fantastic job making the buildings look great and then also celebrating all that needs to be celebrated about our country and about our students, which is important. And then finally leaving off with Mr. O'Connor and getting our brand-new flag at the junior-senior high school, which you can't miss when you drive on, and it's really a great point of pride. Worked real hard to push to get the equipment in place. They got it in place, and they got that flag up for graduation, and it couldn't have been a more beautiful day for that flag to wave than at our graduation ceremony. That's it.
Yes, graduation, everything went off without a hitch?
South Street, you forgot to mention South Street.
Mrs. Deena?
Well, we're going to have more information on that, but you could talk about that.
We're proud to announce that South Street School was recognized as the first lighthouse school in our district.
Big deal.
Really big deal.
Yeah. So I met with Mr. Jackson quickly today, and he was here earlier, but he knows we're going to work on some ways that we could make sure that we get this information out. There's, we're going to work with Syntax, and we're going to put a plan together. We have actually somebody for the first day of school that wrote the, is one of the co-writers of the book Leader and Me from the Covey Institute, and we're going to make a big, important extravaganza with regard to their recognition as being a lighthouse school. So more to come on that. And we're very, I mean, it's been a long day. I'm really excited about that information and as we should all be. So it's our first of five buildings that are working on this. And my hat's off to the lighthouse team at South Street School under the leadership of Mr. Jackson for getting that first recognition. It is a huge, huge deal for us at ESM. And the other buildings are looking to have the same thing happen there, and they're not far away. And more information to come on South Street School. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stimele. Mr. San Marco.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Stimele, you and the rest of the administration from our district. Graduation this year was absolutely fantastic. The process that unfolded was fantastic. The new ceremony that you started with the challenge coins, unbelievable amount of respect for you for starting that. That was truly heartfelt. I'm sure you feel the same way. But another thing that I wanted to point out that the community in my years made a big issue of was the extra family attending. And you made it this year so basically everybody was allowed to bring their families. You made it such a wonderful experience for the entire graduating class, so thank you. It shows how hard you worked.
I think we all could say that. Being on the Board, thank you, Mr. Stimele. And I just want to take a minute just to thank the other Board members here. I do know that, you know, coming to these meetings and dealing with being a Board member from day to day is not an easy experience. And I can really appreciate the team that we have here and the amount of time that everyone puts into this and the thoughtfulness and the amount of outside research that is done and all the questions that come up before the meetings, after the meetings, during the meetings. It is really, it's a really good group to work with all you guys. I know sometimes the decisions that are made here, we have to make in the silence of our own mind and come together with a conclusion. And then those, what brought us to the decision-making process is sometimes just locked away by the oath that we all, that most of us took today, or if we didn't take today, we took before. And it's not an easy thing to deal with, but I want to thank everyone for doing it as professionally unpaid as you possibly could. So I want to thank you guys. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.